Indivisible, the third student justice grow.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I guess this is literally the calm before the storm when you're sixty degrees today and. Fifty mile an hour winds on Wednesday and. It's set to button down the hatch again, I guess. Trish, you have anything else on the or the agenda's good?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion?
Second.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, motion carries minutes from February twenty four.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for the minutes from February twenty fourth, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Uh, general public concerns.
I'm just gonna take a contact first, I don't want to give you all.
Oh, okay.
I've never been able to come in yet, she lives in, uh, Two Falls, so passing down through this way, that's easier.
Yeah.
Um, I asked myself that. Um, I asked myself, cause I'm the primary contact, and if you can't get one something else. I will pass through them ad nauseam, so, but I wanted to make sure you guys had that.
Yes, okay.
I wish I had her energy in the morning.
I got two cups of coffee, and I got another coffee in my bag, my. Yeah. Um, well, I was saying thank you for that, that, that public meeting yesterday, that took a lot of notes to get some answers for folks too, so really appreciate it.
Sorry, I got so warmed up towards the end last night. I was busy, but.
That's what I think, I think, that would be a positive for. I appreciate the questions, and it's helpful coming as well, like I said, yeah, for the, for the, I'm advocating for the community as well, not just for, for the project, so.
I just know I'm on our side of the fence. I've gotten a lot of calls, and people are asking me questions when I can't answer them.
Yeah.
Truthfully, like we said.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so I just, I have those questions that need to be answered, and I wish I was here for the meeting Thursday, but I don't.
What, if, if we need to do like an agreed-upped meeting, um, I'll try and get my, um, work out some schedules to get my developer intentions yourself as a person, as a person as well. I should be at the meeting next week, I think maybe, it's mainly open house, really just for folks to come in easy, easy, no, no pressure.
Right.
Easy accessible, super easy, just a pocket and out, genuinely no pressure, so, um, but I'll see what I can do about it, you know, just more available. I know we're talking to the newspaper to do kind of interviews, have more people aware too, so more questions can get answered.
There's a lot of questions.
Yeah, and I respect that.
A lot of concerns.
And it's my job to get those, those answered and those addressed, so questions answered and concerns addressed, so appreciate that, but just that three contact information, text, phone calls, voice demos, whatever is easiest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have kind of a backwards meeting, our time with Denise isn't till nine fifteen, so we can either sit here. Do the Jeopardy theme song, or go through some of the other stuff that we have, which is very minimal.
Yeah.
Uh, so I guess, uh, other than the. The Denise Ballard at nine fifteen, we do have a couple of things down the bottom for. Accept and place on file the MMP short form, the annual update for Mike Ledley sites, number. Five eight one five seven and seven one four five five and. Six seven zero nine three and the Scott and Tracy Goodell site of number five eight eight six three. And I guess, this is our version of what we do.
Which is a little bump.
Okay. This is our okay, that they have completed the paperwork and put it in front of us, and we put it on our agenda and. Get a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve it. Annual update for Mike Ledley and Tracy Goodell, Scott Tracy Goodell.
Yeah, we have a motion for.
Second it.
In a second, or, uh, number one, two, three, four, for those sites, any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried.
And Bree, just for your reference, this is what they were talking about at that meeting yesterday, where the state came in and did their own matrix, and, and so we really don't have a say in this. So that's why there was a lot of that local council.
No, I, 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 I haven't read through that, but I, I can show you.
Okay. Now we're. The second item there is discussion and possible action on employee benefits and low wage increase. And I guess. Hmm?
Supposed to get. Shannon? For this, or you doing this, or? Yeah, wait, you then.
Yeah.
That's what I'm having right for you.
I, I watched last week's meeting.
Well.
Instead of. It's okay, cause I, I've got twenty employees.
Yeah, you got the most, you got the majority.
I, I don't know that we're ready to act on it myself.
That's why I figured it was just discussion.
Yeah, well, let's wait, I read it, discuss and possible action, but I guess, to be honest, I'm not ready to. Commit to what. That list of. Somewhere in here in heaven.
Well, I don't think, okay, this is my own opinion, I personally do not want to do any holidays. Because I think doing the holiday is gonna actually cost the county more money, because, um. Like the Sheriff's Department, if we do extra holidays, then if they're working, then that actually is gonna cost us more money, because it'd be, what is it, double time?
Because then they get holiday.
Holiday pay if, when they're working, so if we were gonna do anything, my, this isn't, this is just my opinion, I think we should do extra vacation days, I, I don't like the idea of the holidays. Just because of it's actually gonna cost the county more money.
Right.
Okay, if they have to work those holidays.
Well, they.
Then same thing with.
I can see that, I mean.
You know, if you guys have.
For, for secondary roads are one that would probably, that might catch us, uh. During winter operations, I think the other two, Farnum, that.
Correct.
It would affect us, if we're talking, I think there was three federal holidays.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Last week.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, with Rick now here today, I just. The wanting tone back and saying, what the yell did you guys do while I was gone, so.
He's probably hoping he will do something.
Oh, well, maybe.
Yes. Why do they take care of them?
Can you make it up in discretion of the supervisors, of, you do it that way, or would that not be a good idea?
To do what?
Let you guys kind of decide, supervisor, let them, let you decide on what days they could do.
I guess, if you're, if you're on the fence, if it was me, I'd say, um. Do vacation, that way it's flexible for all of the.
Right.
Uh, if they decide that they wanna take that Friday after Christmas off as one of their holidays, or one of their vacations, they, they can. Um, it just provides more flexibility for them, and.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, it's a hidden cost to the county, but it's no upfront cost that will affect your budget.
Right, right.
So. Oh. I guess questions that I had that you guys could have to consider, is this a, uh, is this a one-time bump? Is this a, a bump for one year, is this something that you're looking at making permanent? If it's something you're looking at making permanent, I would suggest we reopen the personnel policy, which it's time we do that anyway. And we make an adjustment. Right now, uh, brand new employees start with a, a week vacation, they get two weeks vacation after their second year, three weeks after seven. And four weeks after fifteen, if you're talking about adding additional, I don't know, let's say, week. Uh, new employees would start with two weeks vacation, you'd get your third week after two years, fourth week after seven, and Gary Hallstruth is managing the fifth week. And fifteen. For forty years, Gary proposed to the union to get a fifth week of vacation, once somebody got twenty or twenty-five years of county employment. That was his first throw at, at the union.
And this is only for non-union employees, correct?
We have the union.
There's nothing we can do about the union.
The union employees are given whatever the contract says.
They're getting their bump in their percentage of the shares and that.
Well, like I said, I'm. I think we need to discuss it as a group, and when part of the group isn't here, I'm not willing to.
I would agree.
Make the commitment, four out of five, and Rick will be back next week, and he thought he was going to be able to. Get on Zoom today, but evidently he was having issues with that, so.
Yeah, I think this should be.
Not everybody will be here next week.
Yeah.
You guys.
Hmm?
Well, and I type.
To change something that's so large and hard for so.
But it needs to check first.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Well, and if we're only gonna do it as a one-time thing, depending upon budget, it would have to be as a resolution too, I think, would be the smartest thing.
One-time deal, yeah, probably. It's a every-year benefit. Or make the adjustment, of course.
I think Mike Galloway said that also, that it should be a. A resolution. Just if it's gonna be a one-time thing.
So if they don't get the chance to use that vacation in this one year, then. They've lost that. Because if, if it's next year, they all get raises, and they don't get their vacation, we take that vacation back away from them.
You can carry over.
So, the way the personnel policy is right now, is if you have two weeks vacation, less, you can carry up to a week.
Oh.
Carry the money over.
Okay, yeah.
So.
That would make sense, we still get the chance to use it.
If you have three or four weeks vacation, you. You're not supposed to carry. Uh. Yeah.
Right.
No.
All right. Well, that took almost three minutes, so we gotta slow way down. Maybe Denise would be here earlier with the weather. But I guess, other than that, we can. Go to our committee reports and wait patiently for, if we have to take a recess, we, I guess that's what we do.
Okay, Monday, the twenty-fourth, I had, um, building families over at the, um, Wright County Resource Center. And that is now, originally, building families had eighteen months. Um, and now the state has gone and said that they're gonna follow the same timeline as the behavioral health. So it'll be July twenty twenty-five, instead of the eighteen month that they're originally promised. And it's gonna go in the same regions as, um. Uh, the, the behavior health. And the governor wants to have four-year-old, um, preschool. And so she's taking that money from the building families, which is early development, child development, zero to five. And she has left, so she's taking eleven point four million for the four-year-old preschool. And she's leaving six hundred thousand statewide for early child development, zero to five. I know, I, I had, when, when McKinley told us that, I was just like, are you kidding me? So basically, McKinley, I think, said he was, they were gonna be based out of Fort Dodge now, but I mean, if you've got. Seven districts, and you've got six hundred thousand, basically, it's. It, there's, what are you gonna be able to do with a hundred thousand bucks? Not even a hundred thousand, nine, yeah. So.
Does that work with the money that we've allocated for kitty cats?
That won't, that won't create a problem, because that will still be associated with the kitty cat that's in that.
It'll still stay there.
Mm-hmm, and, yeah. So, yeah, it was, it's kind of discouraging news, I, I just don't get it, I don't understand the mentality behind that. And nobody knows anything about, I asked Jim Murray about it, he doesn't know anything about the four-year, four-year-old preschool. Allison asked the superintendent over there at Polk Hahnist, her and I were in contact, talked, I asked her if she knew anything about it, and. She didn't, and, um, so she asked their, he didn't know anything about it, so it's like. Yeah, so, head start, probably next. Which is too bad, okay, oh, I, this week, um, I went to the ISAC leadership meeting in Des Moines, that was. It, it's, it was leadership, but it was talked about, um, followership, which is you gotta have leaders and followers. And, um. Yeah, so you've gotta be a good follower to be a good leader. It was very interesting, I'd never really thought of it that way, so I'm gonna try doing that.
What day was that?
Don't know, you'd be wrong.
That would be Tuesday in Des Moines. And let's see here. We had, then we had kitty cat on, uh. Wednesday. And I, the ISAC, uh, legislative's update webinar on Friday.
Yeah, it's so in group on Thursday.
Yeah. Yes, good.
Oh, thank you, yesterday I was at the, um, wind energy, um, meeting. I don't have my. That's it, that's it, I'm done.
The twenty-fifth, I had the housing development meeting, um, there changed a lot of things. Alyssa, I'm, sometimes it's really hard to follow, cause she talks so fast and so much. And levered it up, but she, she made an A, I called a bucket list. Where she's gonna set up six individual buckets, and for each one of those buckets, there's gonna be a goal, trying to get contractors to come in, trying to get some of those properties moved and. Get things moving a little bit, so you get some money coming in, and then get some housing up. So that was a two-hour meeting there, and then I had the windmill meeting, also, I was with that two hundred marks yesterday. So I had.
Um, Monday, the twenty-fourth, building families, clearing what Sandy, um.
Did I leave anything out?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Um. Tuesday, I went Mike Jacobson's, or, um, Louis, um. Mike's dad. He had a washout up there on Drenoch District two, so I walked the whole darn thing, just to see what this is, how this is going, what's, what's happening, and took some pictures. Sent it to Amanda Terry, and she made a work order, and started that process going. Wednesday, went to Region Five Hazardous Materials Meeting afterward, there's a Region Five LEPC meeting. Just caught up, or getting up to speed on what's going on, and what's happening, and I was kind of surprised that there wasn't that many people there, but. Everybody's got life, so there, that's what it is, but, uh, got nominated, I'm on their board now, so, that's good to go. Um. I'm in Thursday, spent some time with Trish again, looking to see how the budget was going, we had issues on the ramp downstairs, um, they put some texture, Chris, did he paint that?
Yeah, we got it done this weekend.
Put some textured paint, I don't know if anybody noticed it, because we had a gentleman that almost faced, almost had an accident down there, and so, uh, you caught him.
Yep.
So we had to do something, so we proceeded to do that, and, um. Friday, ISAC, I listened to the update webinar also, and then yesterday went to the windmill meeting up at Thunder Marks.
All right. Uh, Tuesday, I had Edmo. Um, monthly meeting, Zoom. Wednesday, or excuse me, Thursday, the twenty-seventh, I had CFR. Um. Down in, I zoomed that as well. Friday morning, we did the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Caispool. And, um, actually.
Is that any better?
Yeah. I think they made a little headway, we, we got to the point where it went into closed session, while when you're on Zoom. You have to go in and, and. Give them a, a new code, so that it's private, and I couldn't get on my phone, I couldn't get the thing to take that code, so. Next thing I know, Kyle called me, so that I could listen. I'm like, thank God, cause I really wanna listen to this back and forth, but it was over an hour, and I think we've made some headway as to, um. Trish, you asked last week about requests that they have made for, um. Different dates, and I think that, um, they're in the process of. Coming to an agreement on that, knock on wood, I don't know if we'll get that done or not, but it is, uh, at least moving forward, and hopefully, um. The counties that have been accepted later. You know, in the last few years are, are going to, well, somehow we're gonna end up having to put it all together, then it's gonna be sent out to all the earlier counties, the way I heard it. Then we'll have to spend probably a, quite a meeting to accept this, this latest group as members. And then they'll all be. We're all gonna join hands and. Get along, hopefully, I hope. And then yesterday, uh, morning, or yesterday afternoon, I, uh, I went to church yesterday morning, didn't think that helped much, but I also went to the Wind, uh, Wynden. Ordnance meeting out there, the, talking about that, I guess one thing that I would take away, because we had a couple of people that are, are definitely for these things. And we have a large number, and we had people from, there was people from Webster County, I think there was a few from up around the Cassuth area that were giving their. Uh, opinions. It's like anything else, we're sitting there, and we're trying to put all this stuff in paper, and get our, um, plan put together, so that we can get our distances and get our. So that we don't have. A lot of complaining, bitching, whatever, um, so. Hopefully, uh, Sandy made the comment there that we, as the supervisors, are here to listen, get input, and when they get the, our plan put together, Midas gets that done, then we can have. Our meeting, and, um, hopefully have public input, and come together with everything, but if it all goes south at the.
In Des Moines.
In Des Moines this week, and they take it forward.
Yeah.
We're probably gonna lose most of our control about it anyway, the way I.
Yes.
Understand it.
Yeah.
So.
And March seventh is the big day down at the legislation, everything's gotta come out, they call it the funnel.
The funnel.
The funnel, but it gets out of funnel, right?
It's funnel week.
And I guess if, uh, I was happy that, uh, Mark Thompson was our representative down there. He's, was there yesterday, he spoke several times, and I guess, um, I was hoping that. Mr. Guth would've been in there, but he wasn't, and. Anybody that got that email, please send, uh, I don't remember who said it, but don't worry about posting someone else's letter, just let it have it. And so I guess that's where we're at, so, and I'm not for or against, I'm, unfortunately, I get to sit in this chair and. Listen, and so we're, that's where we're at.
And it was brought up at the meeting too, it's, it's landowner issue, and if they get enough landowners signed up on it, then, then we just gotta have our, get ours as accounting, get our ducks in a row.
Looked like they had a pretty good majority up in the northwest corner, you know, pretty, pretty extensive.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought it was all over in the northeast side, coming down, I was kind of shocked that they had that many up in that direction, but, but. I don't, I haven't paid much attention for who's there and who's not, so.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's kind of where we're at, and I guess I don't see Denise coming running in yet, so hopefully.
Trish, did you find out whether, um, I can't remember the guy's name, I know who she is, I can't think of her name, so you can't get that information from the.
But it's got some places that you might look at.
Be sure they can.
Maybe get some interest in. Grants.
Keep it listed.
Yeah, I.
So you have to know what person you worked at.
Hey, on the, on the sewer pipes up here.
Oh, yeah.
There is a guy that does line them.
Oh.
Instead of tearing, tearing the walls out.
Picking up, and I thought, maybe we could.
And you gotta size the pipe as possible, I have his contact number.
Okay.
They've done work for the city, I guess, I talked to Chris.
Perfect.
Yeah, so that's, then they, that is, they have been working on it, and it, well, it works really well, I guess.
Where's he from?
Name is Thomas Bellwood, I'll give you the outside, I'll give you the information. His last name is B E H L E, first name is Thomas. His mobile is five one five. Three, three, seven. Five, one, eight, four.
Well, that would be a plus, if we can.
Yeah.
Line it and make it work.
All we can do it.
Yes. Instead of tearing all the walls out and everything else.
But anyway, those that are, uh, whether you're on Zoom, or if anybody is, I, I'm not gonna turn on a look, but we have a nine fifteen, uh, appointment. Time with Denise Ballard, who is the insurance rep. Um, coming to do our insurance update, so we have. Unless you have. Anybody wanna sing, or?
We should, when they're on, on, um, Zoom, they don't, they have just guessed, we really should find out who they are. I mean, cause I know in all the meetings that I'm at, that they Zoom, there's somebody that doesn't have their name on them, they ask them to please identify.
He's a, either identify, or, and usually that makes them quick.
Click on.
Yeah, I see a certain gas going there.
Yeah, and we get that a lot, but anyway, all the, like, um, with our mental health, when we're, when we Zoom, and we have to state who we are.
But otherwise, we can just take a brief recess until Denise shows up, I see the UBS, it's not her driving that. Unless Ben has something to for fifteen.
Not fifteen minutes, we have thirteen seconds, uh, Wednesday, this past week, I went and visited the. Coin River Seismic Site over by Vincent, where they have that large, uh, plate. Vibrator that they're planning on doing county-wide, they're, they're trying to come back with a reduced, uh, distance, I think the original permit that every county signed is two hundred and fifty feet from all tile lines. Uh, bridges, structures, culverts, things like that. Hole that they're finding out is that up here in. The latter part of Iowa. And it's creating a lot of. It's, it's creating a lot of holes in their proposed survey, so they went out and they did some vibratory testing directly over the top of some tile lines. Uh, and then. Uh, Bill Mansky, with even Precision Ag dug tile up and proved that there was no damage to the tile. At varying, varying sizes of tile at various depths, so we're waiting for.
Did you do an old one, too?
Yeah, these were both clay tile, one was ten inch, that was probably a hundred years old.
Oh, wow.
That was about four feet deep. And then there was a six inch that was about eighteen inches deep. Um, that was also clay, that they did this test over the top of, we're waiting for the results back on that. They're asking to go down to twenty-five foot offset from the tile lines.
From two fifty.
From.
That's huge.
Yeah, so I told them, uh, at the meeting. Do the study, present the findings, at the end of the day, my board says, stay within two fifty, that's what we do, or we'll come back with some other county lines, but.
Where are the other counties saying, cause they're doing like, what, five counties?
Uh, they've got grounds, that they're, they're seventeen miles in Humboldt County. There's about the same in Hamilton, uh, Webster, I wanna say, is around ten or so, majority of it's in Wright County, they've got like a hundred seventy miles. That they're planning on doing in Wright County, so for the most part, we're. We're like passing to Wright County, because they've got the lion's share, there's also some in Franklin County, uh, Antoc. And Parton.
Okay.
We should find, maybe they're one of them with their pastor, and who got their message from it.
They're after hydrogen, they're looking for hydrogen pockets.
They drilled that big one down by Vincent, they thought, they drilled a huge.
Did they get much?
Uh I think it was an exploratory.
Oh, explorer, okay. Once they find all that, then they they just make the money off of it, or does the person who owns the land get some money off of it?
The person who owns the land would would own the mineral rights, the way that I understand it. So by using that nice, um you know, I think that the county would maybe see it would be a. Uh like a public station or something, show up.
We've been doing Jeopardy questions, do I need to wait for you? How was the drive?
Not bad, I um drove up to Ames last night, so I only had to go from Ames to.
Better than if you had to come Wednesday, right? Better than if you'd had to come Wednesday, the way it sounded. Vicious up here, fifteen some mile an hour wind goes.
Boy, yeah, I'm going from here, I have to go to Fort Dodge, but then I'm going further, I'm going up to like. Clay and Emmett counties, so hopefully I'm in home time, I haven't even looked at the weather, I've just been enjoying. But it's nice and I'm not driving through blizzards, so. Okay, well, we had our annual meeting, our uh conference, the beginning of February, um the board did approve the IGHCP renewal, so. Today I'm gonna spend just a couple pages going over the trust and how that's performing, and then we'll quickly get into Humboldt County and get your. Rates set and established for your upcoming plan year. So on plan or on page two, excuse me, you'll see that we're at fifty-four entities, so there's fifty-four uh fifty-three other groups like you. Joint Purchasing Health Insurance um and about thirteen thousand members, all groups provide partial self-funding. And we continue to get a lowered administration fee from Wellmark, so that. Discount is roughly seven to nine percent on the fully insured premium, so if you were to. Get a quote from Wellmark outside the trust, identical to plan side by side, we should be under that because of our admin discount. On page three is our renewal history. You guys were one of the original eight that started IGHCP, so you came in in two thousand and five when it was created. So um this is our twentieth year. Together as IGHCP and our year-over-year average for the uh group renewal for IGHCP all the way at the bottom there is three point zero nine percent. So I don't have twenty twenty-five populated yet because I'm out doing the renewals now and and getting those. Um renewals set for twenty twenty-five, but the renewal delivered from Wellmark was zero percent, as you can see. Our trend right now is seven point two zero percent, um I anticipate with the IGHCP renewals that three point zero nine, once we add. Twenty twenty-five data won't change much. Last page about the trust, this is looking at our claims by month, so you can see for the twenty twenty-four calendar year, how many employees participated in the trust by month. Followed by how many members, total claims, so this is the total claims for the trust. Um that sixty-four, nine oh nine, sixty-five million dollar number, that's the trust claims, followed by the trust premium, so the premium for IGHCP. This is money that goes directly to Wellmark, is that seventy-four million dollar number with a loss ratio of eighty-seven point eight two. Our tar- target loss ratio is between ninety-one and ninety-three percent, so we're coming in under target. Hey, the last uh are the next slide, our uh slide then is going to be relative to Humboldt County. So again, you guys came into IGHCP in two thousand and five, one of the original eight. Um when you came to IGHCP, you were insured by me, so I was your broker then. And you were partially self-funded with Wellmark, so you didn't have a lot of changes when you came in, um but the. Your rate was changed by zero point four zero percent when you entered IGHCP. And then since then, your average increase since two thousand and five on the Wellmark premium. Is three point four zero percent year-over-year, during that same time, we've increased your partial self-fund by thirteen percent. And your average increase in total cost, so this is your total cost increase each year over the last twenty years. Um on average has been four point one zero percent, so significantly below uh what the rest of the market is seeing. And then your partial self-fund reserve, this was through your last plan year, was very low um at five, five hundred and eighteen dollars, however. We remedied that last year at your renewal, we we made some changes to increase the amount of partial self-funding that was going in, so your. Reserve balance now is, and I'm gonna go over this with you in a minute, is up to forty thousand dollars, so. Um what we've done over the last two years relative to your renewals has helped get your your reserve back up. So on this page, page five, if you look at that gray um highlight that goes down the page. That's your Humboldt County's actual cost increase, final cost increase each of the years that you've been with us. So you can see, if you look at the last four or five years, you guys have taken bigger increases than really what the trust has taken. Because you're trying to get your reserve uh built up.
Which we gotta do, I mean, we gotta have, what's the min- I mean, what are they?
There's no minimum, we actually have groups that um just pay their claims as they come in, so we'll process claims. And then they'll they'll send us the money, so we don't, we don't know what their reserve is, um in your guys' case, you've always kept a reserve and I would. That's gonna be the um most efficient way to handle partial self-funding. At a minimum, I would keep six months of your average claims in that account. So and I'll tell you what that number is when we, yeah, as we get closer.
When I first started, we were in the three hundred. That's where we started squeezing it back and saying, oh, there's no sense. Much, and then we went from there with uh down to where we last couple of years, so.
So let me like give you an example, that's a a great point, so if you look at twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. That's kinda where it started, and and for good reason, your reserve had gotten to the point where. It wasn't a good use of taxpayer dollars just to keep that. Big reserve there and then increasing your rates over here, so the direction that the board went. Was absolutely warranted and behind, my recommendation was behind it. Um so in twenty fourteen fifteen, you can see. That we had our change in the Wellmark premium, that three point three percent, that was our renewal. But we reduced your partial self-funding by fourteen percent. So that you could take a zero percent renewal, so in a year that Wellmark's rates were going up zero percent, or I'm sorry, three percent. You went up at zero percent, so and the reason for that was again to to try to erode some of that three hundred thousand. Dollars, and then we did that a few years in a row, you know, you took two zeros in a row.
So the self-funding was actually paying for the premium. Okay, just so that we, everybody.
Yes, so if you're not increasing the Wellmark rate at the way rate Wellmark is increasing, then we're taking money out of your reserve. To pay that Wellmark premium. Okay, so on page six, this is your fully insured claims by month, so this is Wellmark's data. On average, you've had seventy people covered under your plan, so you can say, see by each of the months in twenty-four, how many employees were covered under your plan. With an average at the bottom of seventy, when you add their dependents and spouses, you've had a hundred and eighty-seven people covered under their plan. Your premium to Wellmark that that you paid is that almost one point four million dollar number. And the claims are the same, you guys couldn't do that again if you tried, so you have, you actually have a ninety-nine percent loss ratio. So Wellmark spent ninety-nine percent of the dollars they've received from you on your claims. Looking then at page seven is a snapshot of your partial self-fund utilization, so. And I'm only going back to twenty nineteen, but that first line item is what you gave us to pay your claims. And then the bottom or and then the PSF claims paid is what actually came in and what we spent on providers. From your employees um services, so you can see that um last year was almost identical. You had an under of of two thousand dollars, so that one thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars came out of your reserve. That make sense? So far this year, you've given us a hundred and nineteen thousand, we've only needed seventy-nine thousand, so right now you're over by forty thousand. So that forty thousand dropped to your reserve. So that's where you can really see the course correction that was taken last year to try to get that partial self-fund reserve back up.
And this will go till June thirtieth. And then what do you do like, cause like claims sometimes come in later after the year, so then does that go into a?
Uh so, yeah, I mean, that'll happen every year, so you're going to have people that are that are getting services on the last day of June, right? So your next plan year dollars will cover those. Yep, combination of your reserve and then next year's uh claims dollars, you guys are in good shape, I mean, your your reserve is going back up. Um we had a a low renewal from Wellmark, so it it would be a great year to take a look at that partial self-funding. When we don't have to deal with a Wellmark increase and just focus on your reserve goals. On page eight, um this is your high-cost claimants, so to help you better understand this report. Uh anybody that has a single diagnosis covered under your plan, anybody covered under your plan that has a single diagnosis. Where Wellmark is paid ten thousand dollars or more for that diagnosis are is going to appear on this page. These are the claims that we watch closely, um large case management, uh medical management gets involved with these types of claims. Um so again, to better understand the report, if you go four columns in. At the top that yeah are green, I don't know my colors, blue banner says R E L. R E L is relationship, the first claimant you'll see is an S, that means it's a spouse of a dependent. Or a spouse of an employee, excuse me, so you have the first claimant is spouse. Followed by the age, whether or not they're still covered under the plan or not, so this member is still covered under the plan. Then you could see the claims paid for four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, of which four hundred and fifty-two thousand was covered under the health plan. And seventeen thousand was covered under pharmacy for um. Heart and kidney disease, so they had a they had a dual diagnosis, the next one is canceled. So that is an employee, you can see that employee's age band, you can see that they're canceled. That just simply means the employee is no longer a risk under your plan, so they've left your employment, um and we we remove that risk before calculating your renewal. As you go through there, I don't think you're gonna have any trouble reading this, um there's nothing really that jumps off the page, you have a lot of of diabetics. Um that's true. That's true across the state of Iowa, that's true across the United States, that's not specific to this group at all. Looking at page nine, this is a copy of your uh receipts and disbursements report through December. This is a report that is received by the auditor's office on a monthly basis. Um the purpose of this report is to track your monthly consolidated bill, so EBS. Our administration company sends a bill to Humboldt County that shows all of your employees. And then what benefits they're participating in, and then this keeps track of that, so the top section is going to be what we billed you for. And what we received from you by line item by month, um so. If you look on that receipts and go just about halfway down the page, you'll see PSF claims funding right be- right above interest income. So if you follow that along, you can see by month, you're giving us roughly twenty thousand dollars a month. That money is coming from Humboldt County through premium, through you know, your set premiums. Coming into EBS and then we're sticking that in your reserve to pay your claims. So you give us twenty thousand dollars a month, so through December, you've given us a hundred and eighteen thousand. If you drop down to the disbursements, this is gonna show you what we did with the money that you gave us, so now find PSF claims processed. So above, I said you gave us a hundred and eighteen thousand to pay your claims, now you can see your claims by month. Those aren't gonna be um consistent, those are gonna be kinda all over the board, um. So you can see in January, your partial self-funded claims were ten thousand. In September, they were twenty-two thousand, in December, they were five thousand, so a lot of variability in there as people go to the doctor. Um but the total that you've that we've processed, so this is the number where we've actually paid. Providers, we've paid eighty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars to providers on behalf of Humboldt County. And then if you go to the bottom where it says claims account balance, that is your reserve, so you currently through December. You had forty thousand two hundred and ninety dollars in the bank to pay your claims. Next is gonna take us to your medical benefit overview, so this is a uh a summary of your current benefits. Uh that your employees have today, so currently they have a seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible, fifteen hundred family. The family's always gonna be two times what the single is, there's two out-of-pocket limits maximum per family. So the employee would have a seven fifty deductible, fifteen hundred if they're covered under family. The white section there next, that five thousand, ten thousand represents what the county is purchasing through IGHCP. So the actual deductible at the Wellmark level is five thousand, ten thousand, if your employee were to call Wellmark. And say, how much of my deductible have I met, they're gonna speak to that employee as though they have a five thousand dollar deductible, because Wellmark doesn't see. The seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible, that happens at our our level. Okay, so that five thousand dollar, ten thousand dollar deductible, single family, is really what the county is purchasing. So the county is purchasing that higher limit. And then we're processing it down to a richer benefit for your employee, so the employees have, um so the employee has a seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible. Then they have a fifteen hundred, now we're back to the gray, a fifteen hundred dollar out-of-pocket maximum. So the most of the employee is gonna pay for medical hospital services and any calendar year is gonna be fifteen hundred dollars, regardless how big that claim is. Um they're not gonna be on the hook for anything over fifteen hundred dollars in a calendar year, again, two times that for family would be three thousand dollars. Now, the out-of-pocket that the county purchases is that seventy-three fifty fourteen seven. So the the bottom line here is, is that the white section is what the county's buying, the gray section is what the employee receives. The stuff in the middle is paid out of that reserve. Okay, so so all the claims that fall between the gray and the white is paid out of that that partial self-fund reserve, those are the the claims that are paid by the county. Your employees have a um zero dollar copayment for doctors on demand, doctors on demand is a telephonic. Um benefit that allows the employees to engage with a a board-certified physician here in the United States via FaceTime video. Um that provider can diagnose and prescribe medication over the phone for non-acute care. Um and the employees access to that for no cost, so that's one way that the employee can engage in their medical plan without any out-of-pocket. Experience, um that's true for uh mental health as well. Preventative care is also available to your employees at no cost, so if your employees are going to the doctor for their annual physicals. And anything associated with that annual physical, um. That's coded as as uh preventative will also be no charge to your employees. So those are gonna be your annual physicals, all the blood work that goes with that, the annual screenings like mammograms, uh colonoscopies. Anything that's labeled pers- as preventative services will be available to your employees at no cost. They do have a cost if they go to the doctor's office, brick and mortar, the old-fashioned way, there's a ten dollar copay. Um to see a physician, so the day of service, your employee would pay that ten dollar uh copay and then insurance would pay the rest. Now, if your employees go to a primary care physician, then that copay's actually five dollars.
I was just gonna bring that up, I'm like, wait a minute, we've been paying five.
Yeah, there's a little and a very small print at the bottom, I says that, but, yeah, um so. Yeah, a primary care physician are gonna be your general practitioners, um that would also include pediatric. That would also include pediatric care, internal medicine, nurse practitioners. Who've I missed, nurse practitioners, general practitioners.
But I think you have to claim, you have to.
You you have to state who the primary is and then you have to use that primary for your care. Preventative care. Now, with that said, if you have somebody that doesn't declare, uh let's say you have a new employee that started today. Um next month, they go to the doctor, they forgot to declare their primary care physician. When they go to the doctor, if they're seeing a primary care physician at that visit, Wellmark will automatically declare that for them and give them the five dollar discount. The employee is able to change their primary care physician anytime and as often as they want. But if they don't declare or see primary care, let's say they, for whatever reason, they have a relationship with their specialty doctor, um so they wanna see them, that's fine, it'll cost them ten dollars. That's gonna really lead us to your prescription drug plan. You have a four-tier prescription drug plan, it's Wellmark's um most inclusive or richest formulary that they have. So for, there's no um drugs that Wellmark has um declared as coverable, that your employees don't have access to. If they use a tier one drug, there's no cost for those, tier one drugs are um are are paid entirely by the carrier, by by Wellmark. Tier two drugs, the employee would pay fifteen dollars at the time of service, so when they're picking up the drug, they'd pay that fifteen dollars. Thirty dollars for tiers three and four, and specialty is eighty-five. Um we do have a mail order program, so if the employees use the mail order program, they can get uh three months of drugs for two copayments, so you get one month free. No changes for your upcoming plan year relative to uh plan design unless there's something that you would like me to run for you. Uh your plan's running well, um I any any thoughts, questions, concerns on your plan design?
I'm really happy with our insurance, I love it.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the big benefits that I G H C P members receive is um you know, because our renewals are low, you know, and our renewals are low because of our size and because we've had such low renewals for the last twenty years, employers haven't felt backed in a corner where you have to start cutting benefits. Um if you go to the public or the private sector, um and honestly, a lot of, you know, I can name a few counties that are going through it too, where their renewals have just been thirty percent, you know, thirty percent last year, twenty-five percent this year. You know, they have no choice but to increase deductibles and out-of-pockets because they have to cut costs. So we're fortunate that our renewals have been so low and the integrity of the benefits really have been the same since inception. Okay, on page eleven, this is where we start mapping. So we're going to talk about what you wanna do relative to renewal with obviously the emphasis is going to be on, you know, your reserve goals. So right now, um let's start by looking at that middle box. So what I've done is you can see plan year in gold there, I looked at the last five years. So in that box is your last five years of paid claims, claims paid out of your reserve. On average, you spend a hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars on your on turning that rich, that that benefit from Wellmark into a richer benefit for your employees. You've spent a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to do that each of the last five years on average. Now, if we look at your current claims, just six months of claims, you're at seventy-nine thousand two oh eight, I'm still in the middle of the page. So currently, for first six months of your plan year, you're running right about eighty thousand dollars. So if we look at that and trend that out through um the end of the plan year, if the last six months are like your first six months, you should end around a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so your your um higher utilization than what you've seen, your partial self-fund is running a little high. So um last year's utilization was a hundred and ninety-two thousand, which was thirty-one percent higher than the previous year. So last year was a little higher, this year's a um is is trending down from that. So I'm showing you a couple of different renewals. And we don't have to land on either of the ones that I brought, I can make changes from there and and we can do something maybe in the middle. But if you start out, now I'm going back up to the top box all the way to the left where it says current plan. I first want you to understand as a county what your risk is and how we're funding that risk. So to understand what the risk for the county is, you have to first start with the insured out-of-pocket. So remember I said the plan that you buy from Wellmark has a seventy-three fifty out-of-pocket maximum? Once claims are so high that that seventy-three fifty gets hit, Wellmark's now paying it a hundred percent. So you're not, the county's not on the hook anymore and neither is the employee. So we start out with seventy-three fifty as the risk, but the employees have an out-of-pocket maximum of fifteen hundred. So we have to remove the employee liability from the overall risk. That's gonna leave fifty-eight fifty on a single contract as the county's exposure. So on any single person covered under this plan, the most the county will pay is five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So if you have a million dollar or two million dollar claim, you're only on the hook for fifty-eight hundred of that. Okay, you're not, the the size of the claim, the bigger that claim gets, you don't have to worry about that, the trust absorbs that. So if you have twenty-two single people covered under your plan, I have to say, okay, well, their risk is fifty-eight fifty, times that by twenty-two risk exposures, the most you'll pay on your single participants is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. Let's do the same thing for the families. Once claims on a family hits fourteen-seven, everybody's off the hook. But the employee that has family coverage, they have two deductibles, two out-of-pockets, so their risk is three thousand. Remove the employee liability and you have eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. So the most the county is exposed to on a family contract is eleven-seven. You have forty-six family members, our family units, participating. So we've got to take that eleven-seven times the forty-six, that gets us five hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. Add that to the single risk that I just told you was one twenty-eight seven. Now you're at your total worst-case scenario, so that's six hundred and six, almost six hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. That's your worst-case scenario, if every single one of your employees and their dependents were all hospitalized in the same year, that's what's gonna happen. We know that's never gonna happen, but we know a certain percentage will hit that limit. So currently, today, we have it funded for thirty-five percent, almost thirty-five and a half percent of your people being hospitalized in the same calendar year. If that happens, that equals two hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. So we're putting two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars into your plan right now annually to pay your claims. Remember, your five-year average is a hundred and forty-six, your high point, highest point you ever had is a hundred and ninety-two. This year, you're trending at a hundred and fifty-eight, we're putting in two hundred and thirty-six. So you guys are funding your plan very well. Already, before we before we talk any further, your plan is is funded appropriately, even a little, oh, excuse me, overfunded. Um on average, what I would expect your group to use at is about twenty-five percent. I have it funded for thirty-five percent to hit, I expect twenty-five to hit. Anything over drops to your reserve.
And that will over time build our reserve back.
Absolutely. So I just wanted to first establish that you guys have, you you righted that ship, okay? Over the last few years, we've done that. So we're in a really good place today, as we're going into your renewal, we're in about as good of a spot any county can be in. Your reserve is is doing well, your claims are trending a little high, you know, on the the Wellmark side, but they've come down a little bit on the partial self-fund side. So in a year where we don't have a Wellmark renewal to battle, might be a good year to add a little bit more funding into your plan, build a little more cushion. So I'm showing you a two and a half percent increase. I'm happy to look at a two percent, I'm happy to look at a one and a half percent. But just to start the conversation, I I ran a two and a half percent renewal and I ran a five percent renewal, five percent's probably a little aggressive. A two and a half percent renewal would put your plan funded at almost forty-one percent. So we would be putting enough, and this is key, enough new money into your plan to cover forty-one percent of your people being hospitalized. That would produce an extra thirty-six thousand dollars annually, more than you're doing this year. So if you do a two and a half percent renewal, you're gonna put thirty-six thousand dollars more in in twenty-five than you did in twenty-four. A five percent renewal would put in seventy-six thousand. I brought it because I didn't know a hundred percent where everybody's head was, I think that's a little aggressive. I I really like the two and a half, I think I could get behind a two percent as well. So where where are you guys at? What have you talked about? What did you bu- end up budgeting?
I guess.
We do that every year, don't we?
Rick usually call starts calling me in October, wanting to know what to budget and, you know, the further the earlier I'm asked to give a prediction, the more conservative I'm gonna be, because I don't wanna tell you, hey, I think we're gonna get a two percent and then come in here with five. I'd rather say I budget five and me come in with two. So we probably started, when he first called me, I probably told him to budget between three and five.
Well, if it's good, the whole board was behind it, if it's bad, it was Rick's.
Well, and considering the budget restrictions we're having.
I understand that very.
I mean, if it goes up next year.
It's gonna be a lot harder to get the money.
Yeah, it's nice to have that cushion.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, that's actually one place we can we believe, you know.
Yes, yes.
Save on our health insurance, budget more for it. For stock.
So why don't we look at what that looks like as premiums, okay? So I, on page twelve, I just wanna show you this, because this is um this is applying, the gold the gold section at the top is your current plan today. The gray section at the bottom is taking your at your current plan and making no modifications, just it's a zero percent. That's what we received from Wellmark. But I want you to now go to page thirteen, because the I G H C P board did approve the I G H C P consulting fee increase. Um in twenty years, we've never asked for a fee increase. Um that doesn't mean I haven't been asked to increase the fees, my employer has asked me to increase the fees. I didn't think it was necessary, we've always had the resources to um manage the program. We're at a point where we've had some pretty good growth over the last two years. And I'm having, just geographically, I'm having trouble getting across the state in the small window I have to renew I G H C P. With most counties um only meeting on Mondays and Tuesdays, it's really hard for me to get um from Lee County to Emmett County. You know, it's like I have to cover the whole state, so we're um looking for somebody to help me with the I G H C P renewal retention and sales. Um so that's the biggest ask, the biggest reason that we asked for that, and it was approved, so. If you do nothing from today's conversation, you say, we wanna keep our funding the same, we don't wanna increase that, we just wanna take the lowest renewal that you can deliver us, that's page thirteen. So your renewal without increasing your partial self-fund would be a zero point two five percent increase. That'll take us to the two and a half percent on the following page, so let's walk through this. You can see the gold section at the top, but those are your current plans um and and plan costs. So the Wellmark premium is the biggest portion of our overall cost. So on page fourteen, if you look in that gold section, Wellmark premium and follow that over, you'll see it's eight hundred and twenty dollars a single and twenty fifty-two for a family, that's that's money that you're gonna send us and we're sending that directly to Wellmark. Then you see the funding, that one sixty-one on a single and that three hundred and fifty-one twenty on a family, if you multiply that by how many singles and families there are, that's gonna equal two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, that's the money that you're putting towards your plan right now to pay your claims. If you drop down to the gray box, the Wellmark premium stayed the same, it's off by pennies, but it's still equal zero. You'll see that the one sixty-one on a single plan, drop that down to the gray, is now one eighty-one. So we would be increasing the single partial self-fund funding by twenty dollars on a single. The family would go from three fifty-one twenty, drop down to four oh seven twenty. And then with the change in the consulting fee, that would have an overall increase on the single from one thousand two dollars and thirty-three cents, what's today's premium, down to one thousand twenty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. The family would go from twenty-four thirty-eight to twenty-four ninety-nine. That would reflect a two and a half percent increase in total cost and would put your partial self-fund to two hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and five fifty-eight dollars of new money into your plan next year.
Minus the claims.
Yeah, yes, I mean, you're gonna have claims that'll hit that, right?
It'll become an.
Yes, yes. Right. So my recommendation to the board, and again, I'm but um today is the two and a half percent. I just, I just think the five percent we're swinging too hard the other way. I think we just need to find a balance in the center, not go so hard this way that we've gotta cut back this way, you know, as that pendulum swings, we wanna we wanna keep it like this.
What do you do when they go up next year for Wellmark?
So a couple of things, let's say um next year, we get a to to describe this, I'm gonna ask you to go to page eleven. So let's say next year, we get a five percent increase um and you wanna take a three and a half or a four percent. Instead of funding, okay, I'm on that middle section, the two and a half, instead of putting two hundred and seventy-two thousand into your plan, I might back that off and say, you don't need to fund at forty-one percent anymore, you've got the great reserve balance, you got a four percent renewal from Wellmark. Let's move that funding back down to thirty-five percent or or down to more in line with what you're using at, get closer to the twenty-five percent. If we reduce the new money coming into your plan, that reduces your overall increase. So instead of taking a four, I don't even remember now what I said, if I said four or five from Wellmark, but if Wellmark delivered us a four percent and we reduce your funding, I could turn that four percent into a three percent so easy without causing angst to your reserve.
So are you being overly cautious because you're afraid that next year we're gonna have an increase? And if we do five percent this year, you'll have, we'll have a better cushion in ourselves.
And then we won't have to raise the rate for anybody.
The thing to keep in mind is, is you look at the premiums, back to page fourteen. If you look at premiums, your total cost today are is a thousand dollars on a single contract, right? It's a thousand and two. But eight hundred and twenty of that goes to Wellmark, so that doesn't leave a lot of room left between between the eight hundred and twenty and the thousand dollars. So ultimately, controlling that Wellmark rate is my most important job. You know, I gotta keep that number as small as possible. If we get a five percent or a four percent from Wellmark, you know, it's gonna take a lot of impact to your partial self-fund to make, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be impossible to to fund your way out of a Wellmark renewal, we're not gonna be able to, it's because the partial self-fund number is so small in comparison of the total. However, um you know, if we keep it kind of small swings, we can easily go from a four or a five down to a three. And you guys have done that many, many, many years, what with being an I G H C P. It just allows you to leverage your fund balance against cost increases. So it leaves you. So it leaves you vulnerable if you can't do that. And I, I think you can accomplish that with the two and a half. Can you accomplish it even more and longer with a five? I mean, of course, you know, the more money you put in, the less we have to worry about in the future.
Well, our budget ability is get less and less. More and more. Expenses. But.
He budgeted five percent for this.
So the difference between two and a half and five percent is twenty five dollars and fifteen cents extra in self funding.
On a single contract?
Honestly, yeah, I didn't do the family.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you budgeted five. A- a- and you wanna take all five back to page eleven. That's gonna fund your plan at forty six, forty seven percent utilization. That's gonna give you. Enough money for forty seven percent of your people to be hospitalized. Remember, expect twenty five. We're gonna fund it for forty seven. But that would put three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars into your reserve. And again, your high point was a hundred ninety two thousand dollars. So I, it seems a little.
I think we're fired at two point five, are we? We're fired at two point five, are we?
Well, I think, I think there was, while you took your call, I think there was just some conversation. Yeah, do we wanna go a little higher? And, and there's a lot of room between two and a half and five. I can go three, I can go four.
Well, the difference is, I, between the two, between two and a half and um five is forty thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. For self funding exposure. So I mean.
Yeah. Five percent's gonna give you forty thousand dollars more. Five percent's gonna give you forty thousand dollars more than the two and a half percent.
Three thousand three.
Yep, that's right.
Well, do we need this answer today?
Absolutely not.
Well, I guess, my question is, is um Rick will be back this week. Hopefully, we could, if we.
Why don't I, yeah, why don't I? Have, absolutely. Why don't I send over, what do you wanna see, a three? Just a three?
Probably just do a three and a four and that way you can go for each one. That way, if she's got five in built into the budget or ready. And we can look and see where we're at, three and four and the budget is already printed, so. And just an FYI, um, for you guys that haven't went down to the basis.
Conference.
Conference clinic. It is mind boggling to sit in there because the numbers is just like you, did I walk into the wrong room? It's just. Just gets tossed your way and it's like, holy cow.
But it's. It's necessary information. It's, you know, um, we all have a big responsibility when we are. Making decisions with taxpayer dollars and I take that very seriously. Um, and I know you all do too, and I just wanna make sure that everybody understands where every dollar is going. And we're very transparent with that. Um, you know, and we also want you to understand. You know, why your premium is a thousand dollars on a single, you know, these, you know, we're getting. There's a lot of magic, or there's not a lot of magic behind it. It's all factual. It's, this is what your claims are. This is what's happening in the pharmacy world. Pharmacy is overtaking the medical industry like wildfire. And we're all working like crazy to get control of it. We have lobbyists that are working hard to to. Um, to try to stop some of the hyper uh inflation that exists within the pharmacy industry. I mean, that's all we, that's all we can do. And 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 so. I think one of the things that Bruce, you you're probably referring to from that meeting is all the pharmacy talk. You know, there was a lot of talk this year. We we invited. Our legislators to the session to kinda update everybody as to what's going on. What are we looking at and what what does that impact mean to Iowa and Iowa taxpayers? So. At any time in any year, we invite the whole board to come to that IG HCP conference. We think that everybody can get something out of it. Um, we have some groups that send union leaders um. To the conference because they want their union to understand what you're battling. You know, these are the things that we're dealing with. This is why the decisions are so hard. Um, so a- a- anybody's always welcome.
Have you, are you expanding this year?
So I'm struggling with that a lot this year, to be honest with you. Um, I have, my renewal gets approved. Um, the like around the eighth of February. And then I have until really the end of April. To get everybody renewed. So to get fifty four groups across the state of Iowa all to approve their renewals. The very small window to do that, to make matters even more difficult, counties only meet on Mondays and Tuesdays. So to get all across the state between eight AM and when everybody wraps up by noon on Mondays and Tuesdays. There's just not enough enough of them. And so um we are growing my team, so to to help me with that. Um, I'm interviewing people right now. I'm considering bringing somebody that's already on my team up, which would be ideal.
During your busy time, you're.
Yes, well, I I I needed that rate increase to help me get that done. Um, so we might not have a lot of growth this year, and I think that's fine. We've added eleven or twelve groups in the last two years and I really. Am comfortable with two or three groups that at each year is is perfect. So if we have a year where we don't have that hyper growth, that's okay.
Well, that's kinda scary to switch too, because don't you have kinda that year when you have to give your pers- your current. Provider that who we're gonna, we're thinking about switching, isn't there kind of like a danger period of when you don't have?
Well, groups that come into IG HCP don't have any danger period, no, because. I'm giving them a quote that. Is firm, that can't change, and it's pretty easy to see, are you better than my current plan or are you worse than my current plan? And then those groups decide and it's guarantee issue. With that said, I don't take every group. Like, there's two counties right now that wanna get into IG HCP that I won't let in, um, because you guys would not be happy with me.
They're so high.
So as much as we wanna grow, um, I don't wanna grow the wrong way. Yeah, um, because my first loyalty has to be with the the current members. And then from there. We'll, we'll take those that um. That said, I could take a very, very healthy group and they could have a apparel happen two days later. But I'm not gonna take a known, a group that's known to be upside down. So I'll run a three and four. Um, those will be over to you yet today. And then um. We'll circle back and decide what you guys, you know, think is best. So that's gonna take us to page sixteen is your dental renewal. Your dental renewal is going up by six percent. Um. Now, six percent might seem like a big number, but if you look at the dental premiums, that means your single's gonna go from thirty dollars and eighty six cents monthly. To thirty two dollars and seventy two cents monthly. So not a big jump in in overall costs. And dental premiums are up all over the state. So um, we we actually quoted, I quote anything over five. If I get a five percent renewal on an ancillary product, I'm looking to see if I can do better and we couldn't.
Dennis are just crazy.
It's really, they're really going up. Which makes me sad because I I really think we're at a point on some of these dental contracts where we need to look at the benefits and increase some of the benefits. Um, for example, with you guys, um, the maximum benefit you have is a thousand dollars. That's a little low. I'd like to see that get up to fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, meaning that the employees would get. A fifteen hundred to two thousand dollar benefit annually on dental expenses, whereas today they're getting a thousand. So I am looking at how to improve that for the employees, but I can't do it um. In a year where I'm facing a, an increase of six percent. So um, just know that we're, we're, we are working on that kinda stuff behind the scenes all the time. Um, if we can bring a better benefit over for your employees without disrupting your budgetary needs, we're, we're gonna do that every time. Your vision renewal, no change in benefits, no change in premium, everything staying the same there, that's a zero percent. Your life insurance, um, no change in benefits, no change in premium, that's also a zero percent.
What would that take for it?
Very little. It's very, very inexpensive.
Ten thousand dollar life insurance policy is, it's a big toll congestion, costing funeral expenses. Now, the way that they are.
Yeah, you're the third group that's county that's asked me to increase that this year, or to at least look at increasing it. So I'll send you um. I'll send you a twenty thousand and a thirty thousand. You're welcome. It's very inexpensive. Then that is going to take us to All Health Choice. So um. We spent a lot of time with this uh at the, sorry, I'm making a note on the. At the conference, this is a new benefit that's gonna be av- available for your employees on July first. Um, All Health Choice is a population health management company that really focuses on preventative care. So uh, this is gonna be another virtual benefit for your employee. Um, where they can engage with, they can do it via like a telemedicine, like your other benefit where they can engage with a physician, but where we really want them to use it. Is the health check. Um, if your employees don't wanna use it, they don't have to, just don't download the app. Um. We've found that the member engagement is is really high, however. So you have an app on your phone. You pull the app up and it does a facial screen. Um, it takes one minute to 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 scan your face. It's reading the, uh, it's sending light to your face and. Um, capturing the blood vessels uh below the skin and then sending that back to the, so it's a lot like our readable, our wearables. Um, with that light and. Within seconds, it's going to tell you, or within one minute, it's going to tell you what your blood pressure is, what your risk level bar. There's several things, uh, your chances of your, your BMIs, gives you a whole bunch of da- of data as it. Uh, and you don't have to leave your car, you don't have to leave your office or your bedroom, you can, you just scan it. I. I'm part of the test group. Whenever we have a new benefit come to IG HCP, I like to vet it before giving it to thirteen thousand people. So we about two months ago started that process uh where we have. Uh, a few hundred employees within IG HCP on the program right now, um, using it. Getting the bugs out, answering any major concerns, seeing how it works. So far, the member engagement is very, very high.
For family too?
Yeah, yeah.
We have a co-pay to our phone then?
So it's free. It's free. Um, so. Uh, it's a free service to IG HCP members, so there's no co-pay to them, there's no cost. We had a, we had a situation over in Waukees, some of the city of Waukees employees are on it. And the gentleman was doing some face scans and all of the people on the 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 backside. Um, that are are reading, the results are all uh nurses or nurse practitioners. So. They, they saw that he had some irregularity relative to his heart rate um from the facial scan. So they reached out to the member and said, you know, what's going on? And they found out that he was training for a marathon. So because he was training for a marathon, that created some blur- blurbs in his, in his reading. And it was nothing for the the nurse to be concerned about, but it did, it it, but it did um. Triggered, it triggered something and and he got, yeah, yeah, so. Anyway, more to come on that. Um, we're still in the testing phases. We're gonna do that for another month. And then um. If we, what, you know, once we see all the results, I I'm positive they're all gonna be great results. We'll start uh employee engagement. So we'll be having meetings across the state in person as well as virtual meetings. And then um we'll have deliverables both electronically and paper for you. The last couple of pages here are additional services. So um, on page twenty, those are our vendors for those. Varying products, you guys are are working with us in each of those categories. On page twenty one is our current membership. So since your last renewal uh on the county side, the groups that joined. Just this last July, Lee County, Sack County, Crawford County, Kiacut County, all came in July first of twenty twenty four. The cities that came in in July are. Winter Set and Carroll, Sergeant Bluff just came in in January, so they're brand, brand new. We're closed to schools, no more schools can come in. The schools that are with us are grandfathered and are welcome to stay as as long as they'd like. Um, Waterworks and. Other governmental bodies that are outside of that city county government are also eligible and and that's who's participating there.
Curious, why's, why no more student?
Wellmark operates a number of schools programs and they really wanna keep those schools within the schools and so do I. For the most part, decisions are made very differently. Their demographic is different. Historically, their claims are very high. So I'm gonna rerun and get um a three percent renewal to you and a four percent to you today. And then also an increase to the life insurance that is county offered life insurance. I'm gonna increase that. For uh your consideration at twenty and thirty. Anything else I can get you?
I think we're good.
Okay, well, tell Rick I missed him.
Hey, thanks Denise.
Yeah, you bet. I'll be in touch.
They've traveled.
Thanks. Here's a couple of extras in, or one extra.
Checking for speed and so don't be. Looking for money.
I don't, I don't call it cruise control, I call it speed.
Over something the other day that was um, working with cancer pledge. And it's empowering your employees to be proactive about their health. And um. Encouraging them to go to their visits and so they get that time reimbursed. I don't know if that's something that would be addressed.
Well, they have, can't, can't they take doctor's appointments for sick?
But it wouldn't. Count against him at all, I guess, on that. Well, I feel that's kind of a.
A couple of places I work, they allow two hours for doctor's appointments, but I don't know, I think they have a very lucrative. Sick schedule, I think, sick pay schedule.
Anytime we have the opportunity to give them a chance to at least get to a doctor's to. Check something that they may have come across on their own or doctor. There you go. But what we got going on, we're very happy with someone come across something, so. Or I guess, look at every option we can to make it good for all of us, so. Anything else? Ben, you got enough salt? If we can get to the where we're supposedly going in a day or so? It's not coming. I like your ideas. Well, I haven't heard anybody say they've seen a robin or. That that's awful. We don't have anybody down in that neck of the woods that would send a robin north this time of year, would we?
I gotta tell you, I had a lady call the paper to tell me she saw a robin. If I wanted to put something in the paper about it. I mean, it was nice to touch her about it, but I thought, what am I kind of?
Les, how about Robin's side?